As soon as we get unmuted, which we are. All right. Can everyone hear us?
I can hear you.
All right. The time is now 7:01 PM and I will call this meeting to order and maybe have roll call, please.
Mayor Riekel.
Here.
Pro Tem Hanrahan.
Here.
Trustee Brittonall.
Here.
Trustee Claussen.
Here.
Trustee Flores.
Here.
Trustee Seifert.
Here.
All right. I may rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our own.
All right, be seated. The first item on tonight's agenda is public comments. Persons desiring to make a public comment on items not on the agenda, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program or sheel any phone calls or emails in regards to non-agenda items.
No, I did not hear from anyone today, Mr. Mayor.
Nobody on the sheet.
Nobody's on the sheet in the chambers. Do we have anybody with the raised hand?
No, there is not.
Okay. All right. Then we'll move on to the consent agenda, which contains the minutes of the April 24th, 2023 Board of Trustees Meeting and Resolution Number 14, Series 2023, a resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Silt, Colorado, authorizing signatures on the town's bank accounts. Would you like to discuss any of those separately or make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one comment to make.
Okay.
When I was talking to the bank the other day about the new signature cards, they did suggest that on the record, we say that we are removing the past Mayor Pro Tem Kyle Knott to include now Derek Hanrahan as our new Mayor Pro Tem and sign her on the bank accounts.
Okay. So someone, when they make their motion to approve, wants to add those?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda and then on Resolution Number 14, Series 2023, to remove Pro Tem Kyle Knott and to add Pro Tem Hanrahan.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion by Trustee Seifert to approve the consent agenda as presented and for Resolution Number 14, Series 2023, just to state on the record that we are removing Mayor Pro Tem Knott from the bank accounts and adding Mayor Pro Tem Hanrahan. That motion was seconded by Trustee Claussen. All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do any board members have any conflicts of interest with agenda items tonight?
Nope.
None here.
Nope.
Got none. Any agenda changes by staff or the board?
Not here.
I have one comment during board review.
Okay.
Board reports. One additional comment.
Okay. Okay. The next up is the first reading of Ordinance Number 5, Series 2023, an ordinance of the Town of Silt, Colorado, amending and reenacting Title 15 of the Silt Municipal Code in reference to the following 2015 international codes: the building code, the residential code, the fire code, mechanical code, plumbing code, property maintenance code, existing building code, and fuel gas code, adopting by reference to 2018 International Energy Conservation Code, repealing and replacing the National Electric Code and National Electric Safety Code and repealing all ordinances of the Town of Silt in conflict or inconsistent herewith. And I will turn this over to Community Developer Manager Santana.
Alrighty. So I'm going to give you guys a quick overview, but try to not bore you with everything that this entailed. Our regulating agency, DORA, has required that through House Bill 22-1362, we implement and adopt the 2018 Energy Code by July 1st, otherwise all future adoptions will trigger the most recent Energy Code. After staff went through and kind of dissected exactly what that means and what that would look like for our developers, we decided that it would be beneficial for us to go on ahead and adopt the 2018 Code so that we are not forced to adopt the 21 Code within the next couple of years. The 21 Code has some adoptions in it that are going to significantly increase the cost for our builders to build here. So, and we're currently in the 2009 Energy Code, so jumping to the 2018 is going to be a big jump as it is. Jumping to the 21 would make it nearly impossible for a builder to gain a profit. And as we were looking through this and doing this anyways, we realized how un-user friendly all of Title 15 was and how things were kind of out of order. So while we were doing this adoption for the 2018 Energy Code, all of Title 15 got revamped. And so everything is going to be recodified to be in a different order so that it has our adoptions and then the amendment to those adoptions and then the next adoption and the amendment to those adoptions. Since it is only the adoptions of the ICC Codes that are currently under scrutiny and that they have to be adopted and implemented by July 1st, we focused on that more than the rest of the code. So there's still other portions of the code that we're going to have to circle back around to. We did some amendments to it, some grammatical stuff, some, you know, entering, just adding a couple of things that we have come in, that I myself have come in contact with needing to be changed in the last three years, but there's still more to do. So we have gotten the building code adoptions and the ICC adoptions to a good point. There are additional red lines. As I'm hearing back from people, I've sent this to multiple people to get different sets of eyes on everything so that we can have as much information as possible. I did hear back from the Fire District and made a couple, made the change that they had recommended and the new red line that Sheila's going to have up on her screen or that currently is up on her screen. So we have that. And then I did hear back from one of our inspectors and I'm still waiting to hear back on a couple of comments from another inspector. So some of the red lines that I will send out to everybody tonight but that are currently up on the screen have those additional comments and some grammatical changes because it's hard to sit down and read that much code and catch every grammatical error. So we're catching it as we're going through it. So with that being said, I am asking for an approval on this redlined, for the first reading and approval on this redlined version with verbiage allowing for continued redlining up until the second reading so that we can continue to make the changes that we need to make before the final adoption is made and implemented by July 1st. Does anybody have any questions on anything that they saw or read within the code?
I guess I have one. Is this going to affect any of our subdivisions that are in place now with their permits, anything major?
Anything that is currently permitted, this will not affect anything.
I mean, okay, so this won't, okay. Like Bella Vista and all of that, they don't have to come, there's nothing really?
Well, anything that's currently permitted as far as being under construction. Anything new coming in, any new permit for?
The new stuff that will come in, we'll have to meet that, okay.
Well, the new permit applications coming in. So Bella Vista is, or Painted Pastures is approved for, you know, X amount of homes. If they don't have, if they have not all been developed, whatever new ones coming in being developed will have to fall under these codes.
Okay, that was just my, what's all there's done, okay.
Yes.
And the adoption of 2018 buys us how much time before we get to adopt the 2021?
That is unclear. There's, it says that by 2026, we could have to, but there, the state has not come down with a hard deadline yet outside of this needing to be adopted by July 1st. Otherwise, any changes that we do after that point, we'd have to come up to the current code. So this buys us a little bit of time.
I'm just trying to find it real quick.
And if there's anything in particular that you want me to get in more detail on, I definitely can. There's just a lot of information here, so I don't want to spend an hour on this.
So there's, I'm just trying to find one.
Does it make it more user friendly for contractors or whoever to read?
I'm hoping so. Because when I look at it from the layman's perspective of not being in building for my whole life, it was, I was struggling to make sense of it as I'm explaining it to contractors that it's not making any sense to.
So as we're adopting some of these, some of these say like, under swimming tools, pool spas and hot tubs that we're going to, Section RR 326, 2015 IRC will be deleted from adoption. So can we adopt the whole Energy Code book and then delete it from being adopted or are we required to?
We are not allowed to amend the Energy Code. So what is, and we can amend it in the sense of adding our name and as the jurisdiction, but we cannot lessen anything from the Energy Code. That is one of the stipulations with that adoption.
Okay. Can, before the next reading, can I get a complete copy of the Energy Code?
You want a copy of the code book?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have one in office that we can let you take home and look at.
I just want to be able to review it because there are plenty of states out there with the whole, "We're not going to ban your gas stove" thing that are now banning your gas stove, so.
Yes.
And that's where these, these Energy Codes that we're being required to adopt are eventually going to tell builders what you can put in a house and what you can't. It's going to tell you how you can heat a home, the size that heater's allowed to be, everything, so.
And there is, there is one thing that was within the code that I added in here that I amended out was the blower door testing because homes are being built so tight right now that it would have to be intentional not to meet the three exchanges of air per hour that a blower door test would then say, "Oh, you need to ventilate the whole house." So if we can save somebody a couple thousand dollars from doing the blower door test and just say, "Every house is so tight that the whole house needs to be ventilated now," we can save builders some money with that because when I was calling around and talking to blower door testing companies, nobody in the past handful of years has actually failed a blower door test to where it's less than the three that would require a full house ventilation. And what that, the way that that was explained to me was because of the new Energy Codes, builders are building houses so tight that there's not air exchange and so we're building unhealthy houses because the air is not exchanging out and we're not getting fresh ventilation into these very, very tightly built homes. And so part of that new requirement is to properly ventilate so that you're getting healthy air in and exchanging unhealthy air out. So we looked close at some of those kind of requirements and how we can still save our developers some money but still keep houses healthy for the citizens moving into these homes. But I will definitely get you a copy of that before you leave tonight.
Yeah, I'm on board with not trying to prevent that from taking place and being forced to move your, remove your gas stove or whatever.
Yeah.
You know, silly.
But we can't amend.
We can't amend it, that's the problem.
Yeah. And it's forced compliance from, I mean, practically speaking. So we can't say no and we can't amend the document.
Yeah.
So it makes us aware, but we can't change the outcome.
We can't change the outcome unless at some point the municipalities start fighting back against the state.
Right.
And is that, yeah, how would they penalize you? You can't get a federal grant if you don't adopt this?
Who knows what they'll do?
Yeah, I'm sure that there's something.
Yeah.
We don't know what it is, but we know it will be unpleasant.
Start pushing back, Town of Silt, start pushing, lead the charge and push back and all these things.
Curious if you find any specifics that are?
Specific things that are, yeah, I haven't read the new, the newest one that we're looking to adopt, so.
And the rest of the code stayed the same. We stayed on the 2015 for everything else, just cleaned it up a little bit and reordered it because we also want to stay as consistent as we can with other municipalities around us and it seems like that's the consensus and that's what Garfield County ended up doing was staying with the 2015 and just adopting the 2018 Energy Code. So we're staying in line with what others are doing as well.
Another discussion by the board, this is a public hearing, but no further discussion, then I'll open up the public hearing, so. The time is 7:17 PM and I will open up the public hearing for the first reading of Ordinance Number 5, Series 2023. Persons desiring to make a public comment on this agenda item, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program or sheel any phone calls or emails in regards to this agenda item.
No, I did not hear from anyone today, Mr. Mayor, and I do not see any raised hands at this point.
Okay. We have nobody here in the chambers with us, so no live public comment. So the time is 7:17 PM and I will close the public hearing and open up to further discussion by the board or a motion. I'm just going to say, it's not because of staff's work. I'm going to be voting no on this until I get a chance to read that Energy Code.
May I ask a question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
What's the timeframe if we want to remain in compliance?
If we want to remain in compliance, the first, this coming down the pipeline ended up with a rush on everything. So we've been working on this fast and furious, trying to get this ready. So the first reading would have to be approved tonight. The second reading would have to be approved on the 22nd and then it's 30 days till it's in effect. So that would put us at June 22nd, just barely meeting the deadline to comply with the state's July 1st deadline.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of Ordinance Number 5, Series 23 as presented.
Okay. Second. We have a motion by Trustee Brittonall to approve the first reading of Ordinance Number 5, Series 2023. That motion was seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Hanrahan. All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Aye. Motion passes 5 to 1.
I would be curious to see that too.
I don't like it, but it seems like we're being forced to go that way.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the second reading of Ordinance Number 4, Series 2023, an ordinance of the Town of Silt, Colorado, amending Title 3 of the Silt Municipal Code to provide the clarification of the remittance schedule of the bag fee imposed by the state of Colorado. And this is a public hearing, but I'll turn it over to Administrator Lehman.
I don't have anything to add from the last meeting on this. If you have any questions, we'll try to answer them for you. You did approve it on first reading at the last meeting.
Okay. So this is second reading, is there any discussion on this one?
No.
Pretty straightforward.
Pretty straightforward and silly, but yeah.
Okay. At least it clarifies for our businesses in town where to and how to pay.
Yes.
This is a public hearing, so the time is 7:20 PM and I will open up the public hearing in regards to Ordinance Number 4, Series 2023. Persons desiring to make a public comment on this agenda item, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program or sheel any phone calls or emails in regards to this agenda item.
No, sir, Mr. Mayor, and there are no raised hands.
Okay. And again, we have nobody here in the public with us, so no public comments in the chambers. So the time is 7:21 PM and I will close the public hearing and open up to further discussion by the board or a motion.
I don't like the bag fee, but, Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to approve the second reading of Ordinance Number 4, Series 2022, and ordinance of the Town of Silt.
23. You said 22.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, and it says right there, okay, my fault. Okay, Series 2023, an ordinance of the Town of Silt, Colorado, amending Title 3 of the Silt Municipal Code to provide for the clarification of the remittance schedule of the bag fee imposed by the state of Colorado.
Second.
All right. Motion by Trustee Claussen to approve the second reading of Ordinance Number 4, Series 2023, seconded by Trustee Seifert. All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up is Administrator and Staff Reports, so.
I have one quick item to add to this staff report, my staff report, tonight. We had, you probably don't know this, but Rosalinda approached us in the Fire District and asked if they could clear some of their brush and so forth through burning rather than hauling it away. I think we all wanted to bend over backwards, work with them to try to take care of that in the most economical way we could. And so for the past, I don't know, two weeks or so, we've been working with Chief Kite, Chief Sackett, our, I don't know, I can't remember if Trey was involved in that at some point or not. We probably, we involved Trey in everything, so I'm sure, probably his fault. And Nicole. And we've been working with them, the Fire District Chief Moon, Orin Moon, to help us put this together. So we put together a burn permit with lots of rules and regulations. We had them jump through all kinds of hoops and then they started burning, I think, late last week or maybe even just over the weekend. And we got a note from a concerned citizen. I went back and looked at the ordinance before I emailed back to the person and say, to say, "Listen, I have the authority." Well, you know, I went back and looked at it and I don't have the authority to do it on private property. Only on public property and only public refuse. So Town, Town of Silt, burn piles is what we could do on Town of Silt property. So I've just sent him a note that we're going to revoke his burn permit. But that's, I shouldn't have missed it, but I did. And so I just want to let you know that you may hear something about that at some point and I'll take my lumps. But I have sent, we, I've worked with Orin tonight to put together the revocation and we've sent him a note to say that he's no longer allowed to burn there. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
Anything else? Okay.
Question for Nicole, refresh my memory, Silt jumble storage, which one's that one?
That's going to be the one out on the west side of town.
Behind us. I did, okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, I also have a couple of comments when you're ready.
Whenever you're ready, fire away.
Okay, I just want to let everybody know that we're still accepting applications for our vacancy on the board, that that will be open until May 17th. If anyone is out there listening and wants to apply or you know someone to pass the word to. I also was approached by one of the Planning and Zoning Commissioners about getting business cards. So if anyone on the board is interested in business cards, please let me know and I'll get those ordered as well. And also if you need a name tag and you haven't received one yet, give me a shout and I'll get you one ordered as well.
All right.
Title might have changed, I don't know.
Why wasn't I told this? Is that what this is, this is hazing?
I just told you!
I think I have a name tag in there.
Can I get another one?
That's basically what she's saying, is let her know if you need one, she will get you taken care of.
And on openings, we still have two seasonal positions that have not been filled in public works. I've received one application, but he's injured his knee and I'm not for sure who will work for us this summer or not.
What are the requirements?
I was just about to ask that.
Just have to be over 16, have a valid driver's license, and wanting to show up and go to work, be running a lawnmower and weed eaters for the most part.
Manual labor.
Doing trash, yeah. Taking care of flower pots on Main Street and duties is assigned by others.
Mostly you.
No, mostly Joe. He runs the crew.
Okay.
Trey, question, what was the official on Ninth Street? What actually did let go first or what caused the leak?
A service line that had been repaired before.
What it was?
And the repair came apart.
Okay. I'd heard a couple of different things, I wasn't sure. So I just want to get right the actual what it is, so.
It was a service line that came loose because we dug on the main first thinking it was there. We went ahead and replaced the saddles while we was in there and it was on the service line.
Wasn't it flare or wasn't it connected properly or what let go?
There was a repair that was done previously and we found two couplings on that service line that ran across to the other house and one of the couplings failed, is what it, what it looked like to us. We tried a couple of options to not have to lay Ninth Street all the way open. Unfortunately, that didn't go as planned and we had to lay Ninth Street all the way open.
Okay.
All right. Anything else from staff members?
On my report, you saw at the very end, we had a sanitary survey. We will, more than likely, we're looking at three violations that came out of that. One of them, we knew we was going to get a violation on and that's that backflow cross-connection program because when we took over, we could not find any documents of a previous program. So we had to build it from the ground up. We're at 83% compliance. We should be at 90-plus percent compliance according to the state, but she also mentioned it's only been in a, you've only been working on it for two years. That's way better than I've seen other people. So we're still working to get the 90% compliance. And then the other two was basically paperwork. One of them was our testing reports. We had the date, we had the time. The heading was the test we were taking. So we had date, time, results of the test and any math we had to do. Not good enough for the state. We have to have the date, the time we took the sample, the time we ran the sample for the test and then the results of the test. And that was one of the violations. We just didn't have enough information on our testing sheets.
At least those are relatively speaking legal. It doesn't affect water quality or?
There was no water quality violations or anything. It was all paperwork violations.
And we know what they are now and we can fix it and we're doing it correctly, right?
Yes, we don't have their official letter yet. It's 30 or 45 days after the survey that they'll send the official letter to notice, notify us of all of this. But from what we discussed before they left, there was only them three that we'll have to take care of.
Well, they have to find something every time they come out, too, so.
Yes. See? I'm not lying to you. She said it would be a challenge for her to get 100% every time and I was like, "You don't want to do that." They dig till they find something.
You leave stuff out for them to find so you can?
Leave something minimal to find.
Another question for Trey on this on-ramp. Are they, hopefully going to, they're going to design that so it's pretty much like everybody, we're going to extend it enough where we match pretty much everybody else? They're going to start it to do the whole thing or just extend the bottom or redesign it?
I, all I know is we got the grant, the design has not started yet.
Good.
As soon as the design starts, we're supposed to be involved, so I will update you as I know. But also like in the reports that are out, at least they got that right. This, the money is in the 2026 budget year for CDOT, which starts July 1st of 2025. So this project will not start construction until at least then.
Oh, okay, so we got to wait?
Yeah. Yeah. Because, yeah, they're into the, well, we just got the 2026, so now you can, here in the, the end of this year, you'll be able to apply for 2027 safety improvement funds through CDOT.
Okay. Okay.
They're that far out.
Wow, that's crazy, yeah.
Yeah. And their budget year always throws you for a loop, because it's July 1st to June 31st for the state.
Interested.
What's the estimated ETA to finish up Eagles View Park?
Hopefully, next week, I believe it is, for the playground, and then we have to do some path reconstruction in a couple areas. But the park itself should be open, we're hoping, by the end of next week.
Okay. I know people are itching to use that thing, or already using that thing, so.
It looks pretty good. I walked up there. I like it.
They're already using it. They rip down our tape.
They rip down the caution tape.
Everything else in play.
Yeah. All right. Okay.
It's all my questions.
All right, well, then, kind of roll updates from the board, board comments, but we'll jump down to trustee Forrest.
Oh, nice. I need to go first on this.
You get to go first, yeah.
For, Nicole, thank you for this, all this work on this, on this code. It was very boring just looking through it just now, just as fast as I could, and you reading it. Yeah, great job on that.
Thank you.
What are you doing for that? Should we have a conversation on this bill coming down for, that takes the development out of the, the town's hands and puts it in the state's hands?
I don't know the number, what the bill is.
It's 213.
213.
Yeah.
And is there anything we could do? Is there, you know, lobbying?
I think, I think they're done at midnight tonight. I think the session is over today. And this, the parts that, you know, we were concerned about, I think, sounded like, at least if you ask CML, they had been negotiated out, and then they all of a sudden came back in on Thursday or Friday last week. So I don't, and I don't know, I haven't heard anything today as to where they are with that. So I don't know, I guess my short answer is, it's not going to do any good at this point.
How about like an educational session on that?
I wouldn't, I am not an expert on it, but we could certainly get somebody in, or I can develop an expertise between now and next meeting to let you know how it's going to impact Silt. In the broad picture, it took away some zoning, some zoning authority from home rural towns and allowed the state to make those decisions on basically downzoning certain zone districts. Maybe Nicole knows more details, but I know it had to do with, I think the last one I heard had to do with accessory dwelling units, allowing accessory dwelling units everywhere, but I still don't know that it impacted a town's Silt size or in Silt's location.
Yeah, that I don't know. I just know that it was affecting minimum square footages and accessory dwellings.
And parking.
Yes.
So there's a lot, there were a lot of things, but I don't know what got into the final bill, if anything, but we, we'll, we'll look into it, and we can report back to you next time as to what the, what the final was, for sure.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I put my name on the opposed list on that one.
So, yeah, I think there's two ways to look at it. You know, initially, when I sent that, that, oh my gosh, my hair is burning, email out early on, it was about, this is terrible for home rural communities. I still believe that. I mean, we should have local control over those kinds of decisions. But then it, you know, when you start looking at it closer, it didn't impact Silt, because we didn't meet a couple of thresholds. One of them was population, and then another one was where you were, you know, the rural recreation communities. There were, I think, ten of them that were identified, and so it wasn't on the list, so. And rifle would have been on the list, I think, because of their population. But they, I think they were the only ones in the neighborhood. Well, Glenwood.
But it's also one of those things, once they start doing it at that level, then it makes it easier for them to do it at other levels, so.
It's a dangerous precedent. That was a lot of, a lot of the concern and chatter in the different emails and responses from CML were exactly that. It wasn't what they're doing now, it's what's next. And I thought that went back to committee last Thursday with the markups, Jeff, but don't quote me on that. So I don't know if it even would have made it into the deadline for this session of tonight, if it's back in committee, but.
Well, they were, they, there were people who were bound and determined to get something on that passed, so. Because I think the governor was pushing it.
Publicly, yeah. Didn't he announce it?
So, but we'll, Sam, we'll, we'll do some research on that, and I'll, I'm sure CML will have something out soon, and I'll send it out to everybody, and then we can put a short item on the agenda next time, just to review it.
Trustee Britton?
A whole lot going on. I did want to make sure you point out that May 17th, the DMV to go here in the chambers. It's a great way, if you have your ID expiring or anything like that coming up, you need to come in here, you don't have to make an appointment, just walk, come right here in Silt, makes it easy. Sounds like there's been some good turnout so far, so let's keep it going, so they keep coming out.
Okay. Trustee Clausen?
I have a couple questions. I guess, just because, you know, for my lack of not understanding, how does the fire marshal, just because you're kind of briefly touched on it, how does the fire marshal pertain to Silt in terms of, you know, authority? And I was just kind of thinking about what this discussion was tonight, you know, the hotel and everything. What, how does that, how does the fire marshal fit into the government here?
I'll let you answer that one. I could, but I'll let you.
Current code, our, our current code says that the town administrator is the fire marshal, which Jeff.
That's why we're grinning so broadly, yeah.
So chief and, so I think we were discussing chief potentially taking over as the town administrator's designee, so that he has the authority to actually enforce. So we utilize and appreciate our partnership with CRFR, and so we take whatever knowledge they have, because really, they are the experts in this field. They communicate with us. We have a great relationship with them. And so if there's something wrong on their side, they let us know, but the town is the ultimate enforcer of it. So that if the fire, if, so if CRFR fire marshal says they should not be occupying the rooms at Holiday Inn, they can tell Holiday Inn that, they can tell the town that, but the town needs to then, as part of our partnership, say, okay, now the town needs to step in and say, you cannot occupy this space. So really, it's a partnership with the ultimate decision being the town administrators.
Oh, okay, so they're more like an advisory?
They have been acting as an advisory.
Okay, okay, so, so I guess in the example of the hotel, so fire marshal technically would be town administrator on that one. So when you hear fire, fire marshal, that would be Mr. Lehman and not, and not Orin, or am I giving that wrong?
Well, it depends on where you're hearing it. In the, in the legal sense of the word, as it relates to the Silt Town Code, it refers to the town administrator.
Okay. Because when I first heard it, I thought it was the fire department, not necessarily.
When I talk about the fire marshal, I'm not talking about the town administrator. I'm talking about the actual fire marshal.
Okay, okay. Okay, gotcha.
Who has the experience and expertise to deal with anything fire-related, and I don't have that in my quiver, so I would rely on an expert.
Okay, gotcha. So he would, you know, say, hey, I think this is in our best interest to do this, and you'd be like, okay.
Yes.
Gotcha. All right. Well, thank you for, for that, you know.
It's a good question. I appreciate you asking it.
Oh, sure.
But I don't like my name on it.
Yeah, yeah, I just didn't know how any of that worked, but thank you for, for all of that. That was, I appreciate that, and how is the code enforcement? Are you guys still looking for the person? Or is that job still out there, or?
That job is, that person is still out there.
Oh, okay.
They don't know they're wanted yet, because we haven't put the wantdad out yet.
Okay.
It's gotten lost in the, it's not lost, it's just, I just haven't finished it yet.
Non-prioritized.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, and I, and I was just asking, because, you know, you see more and more stuff around town, that it's, certain things just get worse, you know?
And I will say that, you know, obviously, we've had a couple of, well, in fact, we're still embroiled in at least one big one. Well, maybe about three.
That was part of my question, too.
So we're working on several, and the people who would be helping to do that recruiting effort are busy doing code enforcement right now, so.
Okay, gotcha.
It's a matter of leverage, Chris.
All right, well, thanks. And this might, I don't know if Mike Kite's on, but this might be a question for him. That, that radar trailer that the town had, does that thing still work, just because? Oh, it's gone?
Eighty-sixed.
Okay, okay. I was just curious, just because it seems like the number of speeders throughout the entire town is just picking up. And I know the PD can't be everywhere. I mean, I understand that, but I didn't know if we had some sort of radar trailer or anything like that that could.
We don't. No, our current trailer, the electronics just became so outdated when they gave out. For what we could buy a new one for, would be the cost of repairing the old one. So it's going to the metal recycle. I have giving, given, I have given Jeff the bids on speed trailers and speed signs and that type of thing, the electronic signs, but they are quite pricey.
They don't seem to be very effective either. The ones in Glenwood are freaking, you know, just flashing as you go by them.
See if I can get high score.
Yes, exactly, exactly. Yeah, they may not be effective. I was just curious, you know, on that. And trustee not subcommittee positions, are they still out there, or I don't know.
Sheila?
Once he was on.
We talked about that. You want to address that?
We actually have that on schedule for the next agenda to fill those vacancies. The plan is, hopefully, we will be selecting a new trustee to fill that vacancy, and once we have a full board, we can go ahead and disseminate those positions out to the trustees sitting currently.
Oh, okay. All right, that's.
Sheila's on top of it again. It wasn't very tall, right, Justin?
Easy. Don't give me trouble.
Hey, 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 I heard that.
That was Trey this time. I did not repeat my statement.
I know. Justin's turning red. And you know, with discussions of the water plant and everything, that Iron Horse Mesa, I know currently, right now, that the, you know, homeowners up there have to pay irrigation through their own, you know, domestic water. And has all the, have all the other phases been approved? I mean, is there some way that the town could make the developers add irrigation to that in the future?
I have thought of that. They have not been approved, other than, I don't even know if the, the lot lines haven't even been platted or anything, so. So yes, we can, and that is my thought, that we need to have them put an irrigation system in. I really believe it should have been in phase one, and that way, if we got, ever got irrigation up there, they could use it. My understanding was, and this was before I had anything to do inside this building, was that they didn't bring any water rights to the table irrigation-wise, so that's why they weren't required to put an irrigation system in, because they didn't bring any extra water. So at that point, the town said, we're not going to supply you with irrigation water if you didn't bring any water rights in.
Oh, okay.
And again, that's just my understanding of what happened. I wasn't here or in a position to be privy to all of that, so that's just hearsay. Take it for what it is. But yes, with the next developments up there, I would really like them to put an irrigation system in, because we could probably figure out how to get irrigation water up to them.
Yeah. You know, every little bit, every little bit helps off of the, off of the water plant. I think that's everything I have. Good job, staff. Thank you all. You know, that's it.
Trustee Seifert?
I just wanted, people watching and people you know, please try and slow down out here on the interstate. I know people that are working out there, and they said it's just, I talked to the sheriff, I run into him, and he said he could give tickets all day long for people going sixty, seventy through that. They're just not slowing down, and the other day, someone just about went, took a bunch of cones down, tried to cut in. So anybody watching, you talk to people, whatever, just try and slow down. They're, they're, they're close. And it's really risky out there, so just tell people to kind of try and slow down. He said they could, the sheriff said he could give tickets all day long for twenty-five, thirty above. And they are starting to, just to warn people, they're out there now in the daytime, sheriff and highway patrol. They got the plane up, so they are giving tickets. But just try and slow down, because they did a bunch, they took a bunch of cones down the other day and almost, they did hit a truck. Lucky nobody was standing there, so. Just pass it on to tell people, it doesn't matter, you're only going to go so far when you get there, you're in the, you're not going anywhere anyhow. Yet, you're going to get to that bridge, and you're done, so just slow down.
I've started going, what is it, six, the frontage road down here on Main? Because merging is getting so much more risky.
People cut out and try and hurry up and merge at the very last minute, and semi or something will let them in, and pretty soon, there goes cones flying, and so.
If I'm just going to rifle, I just go down six now. Why risk it, and it's an enjoyable drive, so I'm not, it's not like I'm in a hurry.
But other than that, the grant writer was pretty informative tonight. Thank you very much. That kind of gave us some information to go by now, so I appreciated that. That's it.
Nice. Mayor Protan?
Two things. The first one might be a process question. That's why I was pointing at you earlier, Jeff, but you didn't know why, so I apologize for that.
They didn't understand the sign language, sorry.
The Garfield County Mass Transportation Subcommittee meeting last week, they provided us with a final version of what's effectively a request that's going to be sent to CDOT. Commissioner Jankowski was in the meeting as well and provided some good feedback. We have a final version of the document. It's their hope that all of the trustees and the mayor will sign it from all of the municipalities in Garco. And then Commissioner Jankowski indicated that they will support it as well, sign it, and then get it sent. My question for you, Jeff, is what's the process to get that document distributed? Can I do it? Does it have to come through you?
It'd probably be best if we do it, if we send it out. We'll send it to all the board members. And I did say I was going to do that tonight, didn't I? So that's what that sign language was, yeah.
So you did understand my sign language?
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't know what I was signing, so that's impressive.
Transportation, but I couldn't remember what. So I think, and I think we were going to be the first to consider it, so.
Yeah, from a scheduling standpoint?
We won't be first.
The meeting was Friday morning, and I was like, well, we have a council meeting Monday, so we'll, we'll be the first ones to take a look at it.
That's my fault.
But the, sort of, the Cliff's Notes says, take a look at it. If you see any egregious errors in it, let us know, and, and we'll follow up and get those things updated. They also provided some background documentation from a couple of years ago that was generated on behalf of, or for Glenwood Springs, but it's actually Garfield County data. So it's still applicable, and there's some good charts in it, Jeff, if you want to provide that as well. It's just some of the data that drove this document that's being created for them. The only other thing I wanted to add is that I'm going to be missing our May the 22nd meeting, so I apologize in advance. It's my son. so I apologize in advance, it's, my son is finishing middle school, and for some reason, they chose to do the celebration on a Monday night. I don't know why, but there it is. There's a slim chance I make it back in time, but I doubt it, because it doesn't start till five, and it's in Carbondale.
He only graduates middle school one time.
Yeah.
That's right.
I'm glad he made it. Did that.
Just, I wanted to just say one quick thing. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim brought up on the Glenwood letter, or not Glenwood letter, the transportation letter. It's, the, the request is to ask CDOT to be the kind of the clearinghouse, or the, sort of the lead group in the area to study the transit needs of the corridor. There's, correct me if I'm wrong, but the way I understand it is there's, there's kind of some sensitivity about asking RAFTA to do that, because nobody's really made a decision that RAFTA is gonna be the provider of transportation services into the next century. So that, that's why they, they really want to have sort of a non-stakeholder in the middle, not, not, they couldn't be the stakeholder if they want to, you know, bring in some transit, like bus, bus dang or something. But it, they just, were seen as a little more, a little less polarizing than, than RAFTA, I suppose, so...
Political sensitivity is what I think they call it, and it, it's literally been reaffirmed to RAFTA in every meeting, on every call, that they're not the predetermined solution to the problem. They're facilitating the conversation, because they have the data, they have the personnel who can work on it, and, and they have the subject matter knowledge.
And they're expressing support for that approach, so...
And, and I know it also, and Commissioner Jankowski reinforced this, that CDOT has so many other things going on that would relate directly to any proposed mass transportation solution out here. When you think about the roadways and the other things that they're working on, it makes sense for them to be the facilitator, and reduce some of that political sensitivity.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it for me. That sounds good. It's already been touched on multiple times tonight, drive slow, not just on the highway, not just on the on-ramp. In town, there's six million kids running around this time of year. It's lighter later, so more kids are out, drive careful all the time. Also, more people are out, so if everyone could turn their bushes back from hanging over the sidewalks, so we can use the sidewalks, then we don't have kids walking in the street, everybody can win. And then for Sheila, have we had anybody apply for the board vacancy?
You're muted, Sheila.
Oh!
There you go.
I was already unmuted, I hope I didn't say anything. Yes, I have received one application so far.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Other than that, I've got nothing. Next item on the agenda would be adjournment.
Mr. Mayor, make motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by trustee Britton to adjourn the meeting, second by trustee Seifert, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously.